Okay. I'm showing 6 o'clock. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Apologize for the cool conditions. Our windows haven't arrived yet that are going in. So as we go into winter, if you come back, bring a jacket is all I can tell you until our windows get here. We have a mental health task force that's going to do a presentation tonight before we open our meeting. Mental health is a big issue within the jail and in the public. And with that being said, DeeDee, if you would start, and we're all ears.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Thank you so much for letting us come tonight and present on this very important issue and problem in our community. I don't think I have to say probably everyone hears mental health daily if you listen to any kind of newscast at all. And Walton County unfortunately is no exception to the mental health crisis that is going on across the country. I want to start by saying my name is DeeDee Harris. For those of you who don't know me, I am the executive director of Walton Wellness, a nonprofit in Walton County. We're dedicated to the prevention of lifestyle-related chronic illness here in Walton County. And mental health is part of our mission because it is a chronic illness. And we have started raising the alarm against our suicide rates and our mental health issues here in the county since 2019. So we have partnered with our criminal justice community to bring the organizing body to do something to hopefully develop strategies around Walton County's mental health crisis. And I want to start by thanking all of our frontline responders that are here tonight to support this issue. They are the people that jump into this turbulent sea every day, basically without a life preserver. And this tonight hopefully will be the beginning of all of us coming together as a community to create that life preserver that will both help their jobs, help the taxpayers of Walton County, and also our families in Walton County that are affected by mental health. Let me see if I can get this to you. There we go. So I want to start by just laying the groundwork and give you some statistics. This is focusing on the Sheriff's Office Patrol Division. And I want to just give you some of the statistics about that division and the foundation that they are currently working on so that when we go into talking about the mental health issue, you can have a little better picture as to what they are actually having to deal with. So officers in that division work 12-hour shifts. On average, they answer 12 to 15 calls per shift. There are seven patrol officers patrolling seven zones, so we can all do the math on how many officers per zone. And that is including supervisors per shift as well. The optimal number would be 10 officers per shift. So you can see that they are already operating at a deficit. And this, the deputies on patrol are basically covering 64,748 Walton County citizens, and that is taking out the citizens that are within the city limits of our different city municipalities. So that basically equals 9,250 citizens per one officer on duty. And Walton County Patrol Officers currently fluctuate between 33 and 44 officers in that entire division, and the optimal number would be 57 total officers. Next, we want to look at the jail division. And they also work 12-hour shifts. And it's important to know what these officers are doing while they're on duty. Often, people think that being a jailer is the equivalent of being a babysitter, and that is not the case. There is, basically, the entire criminal justice system culminates into the jail. So they have all of the different pieces of the pie happening at any one time at the jail. And just some of the responsibilities of each jailer is cell checks, and this is different for different populations. For suicide, they have to check on anyone in suicide watch every 15 minutes. There's court transport. There's outside professionals visiting. There's feeding breakfast, lunch, and dinner. There's mediating disputes among inmates, cell cleaning, recreation, commissary, contraband management, inmate requests and grievances, and then also release management as well. So at any given time, all of these things are happening at one time in the jail. Also, each shift averages nine officers, and that is including supervisor. Again, the jail, as I'm sure you already know, is operating at a deficit because the optimal number would be 13 per shift. And in 2022, the average inmate population for Walton County was 500, is 532, and that's including those inmates that are being housed outside of the actual facility here. And then the actual, the actual number of inmates that are housed at the facility here on average is 394, and there are 384 beds in the jail. So again, we can do the math to know that they too are operating at a deficit with beds. So on average, that's a ratio of one officer per 44 inmates. And it costs, the cost to Walton County taxpayers for anybody, this is not including any kind of medical bills or special services, is $50 a day to house an inmate. The next very important piece of this frontline system to our mental health crisis is EMS. And their statistics are there's seven ambulance operating per shift, one paramedic, one EMT. They are serving approximately 14,000 citizens per ambulance on shift. Walton EMS has had approximately 1,200 mental health calls in 2022. As you know, that this is as of September. We're not even through the year yet. And the majority of these calls that EMS go out on, they are really unable to provide any assistance. Thank you. They are, they are unable to really provide assistance once they get there, and that's due to all kinds of different circumstances. But the cost of EMS going out on each of these calls is between $800 to $1,000, even though, once they get there, they're not able to do anything. A mental health issue can take one to several hours for EMS as well as for sheriff deputies. And part of some of the issues is EMS is not trained to handle aggressive patients. The only tool EMS has to deal with aggressive patients is to restrain them during transport, and that's a last resort because obviously there's risk to the patient as well as to the person restraining them. Currently, EMS needs to have law enforcement assistance, both at the scene of the call and during transport if they are transporting someone to the hospital or whatever that is aggressive. And neither EMS nor law enforcement can force someone to be transported for a mental health evaluation. That is a 1013 order. I want to just go through briefly 1013s because I think there's a lot of misconceptions, both in the industry as well as just among the general population. You hear that term. That is the code that they use for legally forcing someone to go have a mental health evaluation. And in Walton County right now, our options for 1013 is a judge, a medical doctor, a licensed social worker, psychologist, or professional counselor. So it is not something that is within the means of law enforcement to be able to make that call. In the field, 1013s are sometimes used as a quick fix by one agency to pass it back to the next. That is not an official rule, but from what I have been told by many deputies, this does happen quite a bit. And there obviously needs to be bed space available for 1013, especially for someone who may not have insurance, and they are looking for a free bed. And our only closest facility for that is Augusta. And those are often very coveted beds as well. When law enforcement is involved in a 1013, that can often create additional stress on that person who's having the mental health crisis. So it can often lead to a dangerous situation for both the law enforcement officer as well as the person in crisis. There has been some new mental health legislation you might know of by the state of Georgia. However, a lot of the legislation that has been passed, there's not a lot of funding attached to that. And so sometimes it seems like it is a lot of lip service and not a lot of actual help to the communities. And in a healthy frontline system for dealing with mental health, a 1013 should be considered a last resort. And unfortunately, because of Walton County's lack of resources and options for dealing with someone in a mental health crisis, 1013 is one of the few options. So it often is used as a first resort rather than a last. I just want to share with you some of the statistics around the calls around mental health. A 1096 is a mental health call, and a 1096N is a nonviolent, 1096V is a violent. And then 1044 is suicide, and then we have the 1013 transports. And then with welfare checks, these are not specific to mental health, but often welfare checks will turn into a mental health situation. So that's why they are included. And as you can see, from 2019 to 2021, those calls are increasing. The good thing is that most of these calls are within nonviolent. So what that says to all of us is there is some possibility for instituting strategies to maybe help lessen the burden of our frontline responders because a lot of these calls that come in are nonviolent calls. We also have both Monroe and Loganville City statistics as well because obviously they, when they are dealing with mental health crisis, our jail is our number-one mental health provider. Ultimately, a lot of these repeat offenders, so to speak, end up coming to jail because there's nowhere else to take them. There's nothing else that can be done with them. And our jail services the city of Monroe and Loganville too, so it is important for all of us to come together, both the county as well as the cities, to help develop strategies around this problem. And again, you can see that their calls have increased, and also their calls are majority nonviolent. This is the city of Loganville, and their calls again increased as well. And all of their calls in regards to mental health have been nonviolent calls as well. So the next thing that you will find in your packet is these are two actual case studies where I talked with several sheriff deputies and just outlined, took away the names, but these are two actual incidents, Jane Doe and John Doe. And as you can see, perusing them, what happens often is someone starts having a mental health crisis, and then they start calling 911. And if you notice, we have April 2nd, April 3rd, April 10th, April 27th, April 29th on these calls. And Jane Doe is a diagnosed schizophrenic bipolar depression, and she does not take her medication regularly. And you can also, the other thing to really notice about this graph is it's basically a boomerang because there are so few options for police officers to be able to utilize once they get to that front door. What happens is they talk to the person, and then they end up going back. As I said, within this first month here, we have five different 911 calls. Jane Doe actually did end up in jail several times. First time released the same day. The next time, she spent nine days. Then the next time she ended up in jail was 39 days. Then the next time she ended up in jail was 38 days. And she was still in jail as of 9/19. And she was in jail for false report of a crime. So this is a misdemeanor. However, what else can we do about her with going out constantly showing up? And then if you look at the bottom of that graph, you can just see the cost of each time going out, and several times EMS was having to be dispatched because her false report of a crime where someone was murdered several times. Obviously, EMS has to be dispatched with that. But once they get there, there's no crime, there's no murder. So there's no reason for them to be there. John Doe, basically the same thing. He also ends up in jail for a misdemeanor as well. And he is a diagnosed schizophrenic also, and does not take his medication. So the main thing to look at here is just that it's a revolving door and that with all of the foundational issues with patrol, as well as I'm sure the city can attest that they are probably operating at a deficit as well, because most law enforcement is, as well as the jail operating at a deficit, this issue just complicates all of the issues that are already existing. So, one of my favorite quotes, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used to create them." So that is what we are doing here tonight, is to ask you to commit to addressing this problem, and especially where it affects our first-line responders, our frontline responders. And Randy McGinley is going to come up and finish us out here with exactly what we are asking for you to do.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you all for having us. And I want to thank DeeDee Harris for putting this together. I think it was very, very detailed. And a lot of you already kind of know, there's been issues with mental health cases here in the county before, even today, I'm sure. But I'm asking, and I'm here with sheriff and chiefs of police, judge, EMS directors, I'm asking you to sign this resolution that is before you. The idea is, one is to create a task force to help try to address some of these things. I think there's, it's not a one-size-fits-all situation. As some of these examples up here, some of these don't even come before my office because there's no arrests made. Some of them do come to our office, and a lot of those ones, if there's a mental health issue, the brakes are put on the court system, and it slows things way down. If somebody is claiming they're not competent or they were not criminally responsible, which means they were insane at the time of the crime, essentially, when a defense attorney raises that issue, they are, judge signs an order for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, let's call them Georgia Regional for ease, for a doctor to do an evaluation. And if they're sitting in the jail, they are quote-unquote expedited. That still can take three or four months before a doctor comes and sees them and evaluates them. My, you know, I think we've tried to do a lot of things, but I think this task force, one of the ideas behind it is get everybody who's involved in the system together to work on different solutions and different ways to address this. We have a lot of things in place already. Judge Foster runs our resource court, mental health court here in Walton County, and that solves some issues. But it is a felony court. A lot of people who are being arrested of mental health issues are being arrested for a series of misdemeanors. They get back out because they're just arrested on a misdemeanor. And then they do something to harm themselves, or harm somebody else, or threaten somebody else, and they're back in the jail as these examples were shown. So I'm just asking on behalf of the entire criminal justice system and everybody that's here today, asking you to sign this resolution as a way for us to begin the process of trying to find solutions. Again, this will also be something that'll help us, seeking grants and things like that, having something like this in place is a first step in a lot of these grants. And just to be blunt, I think you guys know this already, that, you know, years ago, the state council cut a lot of funding for mental health things. And what does that do? I mean, the reality is it shifts the burden and the cost to the county. But it's a reality. And anything we can do to help those in our community and help try to cut down some of these costs too is a helpful thing. And I'll answer any questions you guys have, but I would just ask again, on behalf of everyone else that is here on this front two rows, for y'all to sign this resolution. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the board have any questions? Of course I do. This is just a resolution, starting, looking at the process. And I personally see no problem whatsoever in doing that. And any grants that are out there, we're beginning to get better in Walton County, making application on grants and following through. And we actually have lobbyists working for us now, which should have been going on for some time. So do you have the resolution for presentation?
Mr. Chairman, we have it later on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on there for you to adopt later in the meeting.
At this meeting or?
At this meeting.
Okay, very good.
8:00 to.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you all. And I'll give time for those that have other things to do here if you don't want to sit through the rest of the meeting to get up before we do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. And then that way, we have no disturbance, hopefully, during the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Thank you all. If everyone stands, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and then have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Father, we come to you tonight with an open mind and a humble heart. Please watch over each one of us as we make decisions for the county and also the impact on our county. Please be with everyone here and watch over them as we leave tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And for roll call, we can show that everyone is present. All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to adopting the agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Number four is a proclamation, Retired Educators' Day. By the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, County of Walton, State of Georgia. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 6, 2022, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than 141,000 retired educators in Georgia, 32,000-plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now, therefore, I, David G. Thompson, Chairman of the Walton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the day of November 6, 2022, as Retired Educators' Day. And I call upon the citizens of Walton County to observe that day in appropriate manner, honoring retired educators. Given unto my hand and seal at the historic courthouse, Walton County, in Monroe, on this first day of November in the year of our Lord, 2022. Retired, I can't hear out of that ear. Are there any retired educators in the audience? Please stand up and be recognized. Would you all come up for a picture, please? And I apologize, I can't hear out of this ear. My wife tells me that all the time. Step up here in front, and we'll have someone snap some shots, please.
You know, none of these teachers beat me when I was in school.
It ain't too late.
Four folks in front. All right. One, two, three. One. One, two, three.
Thank you all so much.
I would like to say it's amazing at how young retired teachers are starting to look
And if y'all want to leave, we'll give you a minute or two. Some of these zoning things are interesting, but you may have other things to do. Okay, Sharona. Planning Commission Recommendations.
I was trying to figure out if any of those were my teachers. I need help. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to get Rhonda to sit on the opposite side of the floor.
Okay. This is 5.1, Approval of Z22080022, Rezone 146.13 acres from R1 OSC back to A1. The applicant and owner is Alcovee River LLC. The property is located at 7059 Highway 81 and Double Springs Road. This is in District 1. If you guys remember, this was rezoned just a few months ago for an R1 subdivision. This, you know, the deal did not go through for whatever reason, and the property owner wants to just take it back to the A1 zoning. There was no opposition.
Imagine that. I still have to open a public hearing on it. I realize that. Is the applicant here would like to come forward and tell us, please come forward and tell us what she just told us most likely.
She is correct. We had--
State your name and address first, please.
I'm sorry. Larry Covington. And I live in Milton, Georgia, but I'm the manager for this LLC.
Okay.
We are, we did have it sold, but they found a lot of rock on the property and didn't decide that they could build the houses for a profit. So they asked us whether to cancel their contract. And we've decided to carry it back to Ag 1 and try to sell it for agricultural purposes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this change back that would like to speak? Is there anyone else here in opposition to changing this back? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this issue and ask the board its opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we accept, or that we approve this transition back to A1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, the next case is 5.2, Approval with Conditions, Z22090001, Rezone 92.012 acres from A1 to R1 OSC. The owner and applicant is Reliant Homes, Georgia LLC. The property is located at Brognax Mill Road and Mars Camp Road. This is in District 1. I did receive a call today that the Ned Butler, who has represented us at the Planning Commission-- I did receive a call today that Ned Butler, who has represented us at the Planning Commission, has also met with some of the residents. He is sick and unable to come. And they wanted to see if the board would be so kind as to put this off until next
Okay. Counsel, do you see any reason if the board...
The boards can certainly vote to table if you want to hear from anybody since it was advertised and you can do that or if they'd rather wait till next month to say their piece.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate to hear from anyone and then...
And then make a decision. Okay, I'm going to open a hearing in case someone's here to explain what's been requested. Ned Butler represents, I think, Reliant Homes, has been working with the community and trying to appease some of the concerns of sick. And they've requested us to table this and move it to next month. And if you want to come up, I'll open a public hearing and you can make statements. Those in favor first gets a chance to come. And I'll start with that. Is anyone here in favor of that action? Anyone here in opposition to that action would like to come up and speak now? We'll hear it again next month, looks like. All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board on...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this proposal till the December meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table, move it to next month.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Okay, one more.
Okay, the next couple might as well. These are amendments to the land development ordinance. We had myself and one of our staff members attended a zoning conference. And one of the things that we learned was that the zoning procedures law changed, and all matters that are to be heard by the Board of Appeals must be advertised, letters sent, and every, you know, the signs posted 30 days prior to the meeting. So this is to amend our ordinance so that we are in compliance with the zoning procedures law. That's the first one. The second one was another little tidbit of information that we learned at the conference. We have in our ordinance something that's called nonconforming uses. And those are uses that were legal at one time with the ordinances. Ordinances changed and they therefore become nonconforming. When that happens, if the use ceases for 12 months, then you lose. It's like, you know, your grandfather clause is gone. It's no longer legal nonconforming. There's been some court cases that were actually lost because it was not intentional. They didn't intentionally go for 12 months. So we're just going to add that word into our ordinance so that it actually states whether or not the abandonment of the use is intended, it shall not be reestablished. And that'll just give us some leverage, you know, if we have some uses out there that are legal nonconforming, after 12 months, they would be no longer legal.
All right. And you're making that as a recommendation for approval?
Yes, I amend the ordinance.
Entertain a motion from the board?
We have a hearing on that.
Oh, you got to have a hearing on that?
If there's anything, anybody?
Oh, okay.
Just because it's the land development.
Because it's land development, okay.
Not on the regular...
All right, we'll open a public hearing on this. The two issues, one was nonconforming use and the other was...
Appeals being advertised.
Advertised, like a regular rezoning. Is there anyone here in favor of those that'd like to come up and speak to them? Seeing none, is there anyone here opposed to us updating these ordinances? Seeing none of those, I'll close the public hearing and now ask the board to make a recommendation.
I'll make the motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. All right. Number seven is your administrative consent agenda.
No, you left 6.1.
I'm sorry, 6.1. I didn't get an update. Thank you. That's the one everybody's waiting for, and I was wondering where it was at. I didn't get your update. 6.1, Amendment to Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances. And counsel, you...
Sure, I can handle that one. As you know, we've been working with Director Morris and Lisa at UGA Law School to look at amendments to Chapter 10 of the ordinances, which is the animal control area. We've submitted to you guys some proposed provisions to the ordinance. Some of them are cleanup. Most of the, I guess, the primary change is we've added no unattended tethering, which has been a hot topic lately. So that has been put in there. You've seen the revised one, and unless you have any questions, it's appropriate for you to take action on it if we can do that.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to make these changes to the...
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, administrative consent agenda. You have a list of the items that's on it? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject one thing on some of the contracts that are listed there. Some of them we've laid in on and we have gotten responses back, but you guys may not have the latest version.
Okay.
I understand that.
Thank you all for coming.
We just want you to understand that there may be some slight provisions to the version that you have.
Okay.
But otherwise, I think the agreements are appropriate.
You think we're good? Okay. All right. Entertain a motion to approve the administrative consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Resolutions, 8.1, Project Length Budget for 2023, Resurfacing Projects and a Budget
This is just a standard resurfacing project length budget to amend the budget. These are...
For the ALMIG and stuff like that?
This is resplosted.
Oh, okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Resolution, Mental Health Task Force, and that's what we just had the presentation on. Entertain a motion on that issue.
Chairman, I move we approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Human Resources. This is agreement with One-to-One Health, which I believe, I'll make a few comments, bid with several companies earlier when we thought we were getting the location for our employee health clinic. And now let you explain what we have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Human Resources is requesting approval of One-to-One Health Service Agreement as recommended by staff.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may chime in on that one, too. That's one that we've been working with them on language, and I believe now we have the language that we want. We're just waiting on them to send a clean version back, so...
For me to sign after they approve it?
That's right.
Okay.
So we'll be subject to the final review by us.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman...
If not, entertain a motion.
Well, I've got one thing to add, Mr. Chairman. We've looked at some of the averages on our changes that we've made with our prescription program. We're currently running, after about three months, at a 50% cost savings above last year. So that's working out greatly. We are anticipating a $2,000 annual average savings per employee that engages with the health clinic. So moving forward with a number of employees, we're anticipating that we'll start out in the 25% to 40% range and move up to 60 pretty quickly as we move through that. But just doing the math, that's going to show some additional cost savings to our health plan as we move forward.
We've been working in that direction because our health costs are so high. All right, I think we were going to get a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Contracts, we have a donation of right-of-way East Spring and North Lumpkin to the City of Monroe, Streetscape Project.
I'll cover that one for you, sir. This is a streetscape project that's being funded by grants for the City of Monroe. It's in front of the Annex Building where the USDA is located, just across the street. They're essentially going to be updating the sidewalks and putting in ADA handicap-accessible ramps. Because of the corner there, where the USDA sign is, they need a little bit of additional right-of-way to put in the size necessary for the ADA ramps. And due to, they're covering the cost through grant funds, the recommendation was to donate that sliver of right-of-way that is needed for that.
How much does it reduce our right-of-way, do you recall?
I think it's 40 square feet.
40 square feet? So it's a sliver.
It's a true sliver. It's valued at about $1,600.
I was from the old school, and that used to be Williamson Furniture Company. And there were about eight parking spaces there in front of that building, and they have since reclaimed those. And one of these days, the county may need those parking spaces, would that be giving them up?
No, sir. This would just be at the very tip of the corner there.
Okay. All right. Had to ask. All right. Entertain a motion to enter in this contract and donate this right-of-way.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Got one opposed. All right. Commissioner Banks. All right. We have some bids on generators and installation of those for fire stations. And Hank, you want to tell us what we got here?
Yes, sir. We advertised and received proposals for equipment and installation of emergency generators at several locations. Those locations are Fire Station Number 8, Fire Station Number 9, Fire Station Number 10, the Emergency Management Office, Public Works Building C, which is the vehicle equipment maintenance shop. And we also advertised for a portable towable generator that could be utilized at the 911 radio towers. We currently have four locations that have emergency generators, but it's mechanical equipment. Sometimes that fails. The 911 stuff needs to stay up. We received the proposals. The low proposal was from Legacy Electric in the amount of $282,834.80. And I'm recommending that the board approve this. All of these were budgeted coming out of this BLOSS money. Seems like everything we put out today comes back a little bit higher. So this will require a budget amendment at the next board meeting in the tune of around $81,000.
Are these natural gas or...?
No, they're all diesel. In the event of emergency, diesel would probably be the easiest thing for us to get a hold of.
Any other questions?
Is natural gas available at any of these locations that you're putting...
It is, but if a hurricane comes through and knocks down all the houses and breaks the natural gas connections, they're going to turn the natural gas off. And, you know, they'll turn it back on when they get everything patched up, but we think diesel's the way to go.
Unless you, like Joe Biden says, we're going to be out in 25 days.
Jimmy, don't be listening to Joe Biden.
Possibly.
That's because you got a diesel truck. All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. We need to appoint a member to the Walton County Board of Tax Assessors, and I believe that's Jeremy Adams' appointment. And I think he is Garrison Bobby Garrison. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jeremy's appointing Bobby Garrison as his choice to the Walton County Board of Tax Assessors.
Second. Does that require a vote or no?
I think we have to approve it, yes.
Okay, yes, second.
We need a second. His...
Second, yes, sir.
His appointee is a motion. And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. We now down to the county manager's report and update.
I'll try to blaze through this rather quickly, but I wanted to give you an update on several items that are just a tip of the iceberg of what's going on across the county. Station 7 Fire Department has come in and the guaranteed maximum price has now been lowered down below what was authorized by the commission. So we're getting ready to move forward, and that will have a 12-month construction window. South Walton Community Center, doing a few punch list items. The site work at the pond is complete, and we anticipate paving the walking trail early in the spring. Annex 1, across the street, being renovated for planning. The apartment is well underway. Our big holdup there is waiting on glass, and that's been slowed down due to the hurricane that occurred in Florida. Historic courthouse renovations are completed, but as we're also waiting on glass here. The Extension Office in Criswell Park near the Ag Center is well underway, and that project is scheduled to be completed by the first of the year. Our next project in this area will be the Employee Health Clinic. We were waiting for the approval of the one-to-one contract tonight so that we could meet with them to make sure that they had input on the layout of that. And finally, Courthouse 2 renovation, courtroom number two renovations are nearly complete, and they'll be ready for a final checkoff there. In planning, business license and alcohol renewals have been mailed out, and we're getting ready to have all of that updated by the end of the year, as well as the land disturbance for the Rivian Project is well underway with quite a bit of earth moving on that site. Emergency management, the Community Emergency Response Team graduated a class of 12 on October 8th, and these are volunteers that have been prepared for disaster and emergency response to assist our frontline responders across the county. And finally, with a lot of different things going on in public works, I just wanted to say that the milling and deep patching has been completed for Maple Cove Subdivision, Ivy Road, Thompson Road, Clegg Farm Road, all in anticipation of paving. And finally, one more thing for under public works. There's been some requests to the commission concerning Bentley Road. Bentley Road, cross intersection with June Ivy Road, there on 81. I reached out to Ms. Sue Ann Decker with... I reached out to Ms. Sue Ann Decker with Georgia DOT, and she assured me and sent me a diagram that I'll be sending to you so you can review it of a intersection improvement that's already been planned, it's on the books, and it includes Bentley Road. So just wanted to give you an update of that as you receive requests to potentially close Bentley Road after the DOT, which they would have to approve it, but they've already been spending money on the design of an improvement in that intersection. And finally, to date, we've had over 13,000 advanced voters come through the three advanced voting locations. That ends November 4th, and we currently have 76,957 registered voters. So I'd only encourage everyone to get out and vote. You've still got a few days of early voting, and then the day of voting will be November 8th, and anticipation of certifying the election on November 15th.
Thank you, John. Any questions, John? We had no one sign up for public comment, so we need to propose a change of our January 3rd meeting, it being so close to the 1st, and the ballgame has been suggested that we change our January meeting officially to January the 10th. Is there any opposition to that? If not, I think we need to make a motion to change our meeting in January from January 3rd to the 10th.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Couple seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Under announcements, there's one we're going to call a special call meeting Tuesday night, November 8th at 6:00 p.m., and you will get a update on the local option sales tax mediation, which we will be entering into tomorrow, so I can't give you an update on it till... And we have to do a seven-day notice on a special call meeting unless it's an emergency. So 6 o'clock, November 8th, and that is Election Day. Please get out. If you haven't voted, please get out and vote. We have 76,000, we have a 13,000 start. So with that being said, any other announcements from the board? If not, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Well, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.